All right, I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting of Wood Creek, Texas. It's March 27th, 2024, four o'clock. And we are in session. Yeah, I'd like to ask everybody to rise for a moment in time and stay standing for the please. Let allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Call the rule, please.
Mayor Jopresco?
Here.
Mayor President Devlin?
Present.
Councilmember Lenny Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Chris Grummer?
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hunter?
Here.
Councilmember Krista Richardson?
Here.
Thank you.
In the beginning, you have time for both of us?
Uh, we did, we'll do it and, and-
Oh, yep, they did, sorry.
At point number six.
Correct. So move to the consent agenda. You're trying to motion to accept the consent agenda?
Right.
Oh, I move we accept the consent agenda.
I see. If it's okay with the city secretary, do you wanna, is it okay if I?
With the beginning remaining in-
So, beginning of the meeting, you know, try to make things a little more quick, efficient. Um, that we just have a show of hands. So, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? More opposed, passing the answer thing? We'll move on to the reporting officer and council liaisons and starting with the senior. Mr. Rule.
Yes, in your packet you have the monthly report for February. This is the second time it's been on the city council packet. The same information, I believe, that was last month, just kind of give you all an update on what we've been, what we did for the month of February. So if y'all have any questions, let me know, but.
I'm done.
Yeah.
So Brett and Barney move around over the course of the month?
Yes. In case Brett and Barney, that is what we have per our radar issue.
All right, all right, but then we run, so we don't really know from the report, you know, where-
Correct.
So is it possible to have, okay, well-
Well, I will put a, uh, yes, I'll put a asterisk down there. Uh, we're, we're changing them once a month. And so, and I can tell you this right now, in next month, in April, on Monday, they will be both moved on to Wood Creek Drive. And so they stay there for the month. And one on one end and one on the other. So we get people cutting through, especially through the eclipse. That was the mayor's idea, which I thought was a wonderful ideal. And so we're gonna do that, but we, we try to change them at the first of the month, leave them out there for a full month. That way we can, um, see the speeds, so on and so forth. Also too, we try to maybe do it one way one month and do it the other way the other month. So we can get some more sure, see if there's any difference between coming and going. In that regard, but yes, I will start, um, denoming the locations that they are at.
And then the other question I have on it, um, is, is, yes, all looks like it's an expression. Do we have all the com, the, like trending?
Yes.
Or if there's anything that we want to look at and say, well, trending up or trending down, let's go.
Okay, yeah, it will eventually, um, be expanded, so you'll have a previous year to date and then a current year to date. And so that way you can see a year over year or a month over month or whatever kind of trend we want to show, we can do that. But since this is just the second month, we're just now starting to get the data.
Can I request that we not use the white font?
Yes, you may. I think that's a good point.
The white font? It's like, I don't know if this is with my eyes, but it's-
No, I can't see it either.
Well, it's totaled up above it, that's why it's white. So all those permits are total under number of permits.
Totally understand this, it doesn't really hurt to see.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We might build a palace or something like that. Yeah.
I was curious, when do you expect to kind of circle around to putting the checker industry back up in reports or?
The what?
Checker industry?
As soon as we get reconciled from our old accounting system to our new accounting system, those will be back up and going.
Quick question on the activity. Uh, the only big number jumped out was the emails processed, 2,200. Can you just give me a, what that entails?
Every incoming email that the four of us received.
Does it just incoming?
It is not outgoing.
Including all the spam?
Including all the spam, yeah.
The month's 2,202 and 2,000.
But like, like I've got, um, my inbox, assistants, open records, so I've got three and then-
I think a lot of email, I will say, some of those are spam, but we get a lot of emails. A lot of emails.
I, I just have a comment about the, the, the numbers. Um, we had over 10,000, over 7,000 in the other one, I don't know which is which. But only one, one of had a little over 1% and the other had a little over 2%.
Actually, that 2% is incorrect. It's supposed to be point zero two percent, so it wasn't even 1%.
Oh, so for Barney it's-
Yeah, for Barney it wasn't even 1%, because you see there's 10,000 cars and only 31 were speeding.
Yeah.
And so that's less than 1%.
So, that's, I think that just showed the effectiveness of, of our, our speed signs, basically.
There were, yeah, I'm sorry, I could you?
Go ahead.
One, one thing that I noticed is if you look at the average speed, Marty was at 20 miles an hour and Fred was at 23 miles an hour, which our speed limit in the city is 25. So I'm there if people are mining the speed limit. It's only those select few that wish to not.
Yeah.
Um, some of these cons is white.
It's so dark, you can't see it.
Um, and depending on the lighting in the room that you're in, like, they, at my house it's almost invisible. Then when I turn on certain lights. You see that?
Record administration. Oh, no.
No, yeah, you can't see it.
See it? All right.
Oh, I see now. I wasn't, I just- All right, cool. All right, anything else?
Mr. City Manager?
Uh, sir.
All right, we'll move to the ordinance review committee and liaison.
Um, so I'm gonna try to keep these reports kind of succinct and quick. Essentially, a lot of business was handled by the ordinance review committee in the last year of under Jim Miller as the chairperson. You have just kind of a memo being submitted there. I didn't edit or filter it at all. So there's other information in there that's not necessarily relevant to this report. But if you look, you can see all the chapters that they issued memos on. Chapter 95, Health and Sanitation, that one is still pending. Um, it has, it came before council, but essentially it was, it was during a workshop and then we lost forum and then, so that was kind of, it was basically said, okay, we're gonna set this aside and they'll need to come back. So that, that one is a pending business item that needs to circle around. Um, the exact motion on it was essentially to give it to this ad hoc committee that was working on a bigger chapter amount of updates. But it wasn't really meant for them, but council did sort of support that. And then it just kind of got set on the shelf with them. So I will, I will be accountable for circling back with that. Chapters 90, 93, and 94 were actually all passed on October 25th of 2023, pending legal review. So essentially unless legal came up with some reason to want to resubmit them to council, they did technically pass. On January 20, or sorry, January 10th, Chapter 93 was brought back to council post-legal review and was then, uh, given a, like a final approval. We're still waiting on any information from 90 and 94. They have not come back before us, nor have we been given any indication that legal has approved or disapproved of them. So that is another kind of pending business item that needs, like, I'm accountable for following up with and gonna keep track of. Chapter 70 is on your agenda today, and then all of the chapters touching 156. I apologize if I didn't tell you what page number Ron Ron's putting, I, you know, I have a packet, but, all of those 156 items are free in that, that column are, um, they were also sent to that ad hoc work committee, uh, on chapters. And now we are in consultations with legal on those chapters. And so a larger zoning update might be brought to council for consideration because there are, um, you know, not just a handful of things. There's actually a pretty substantial amount of work that is potentially either necessary or have been expressed as desired by both council and ordinance review committee and even P and D on some, on some items. So, uh, that is decided, so that, that chapter update, Chris Grummer and I did meet with legal on Monday of this week. And so hopefully, we have a game plan in place, and so hopefully we'll see some movement on that 156 update in, in reference to right here, you know, what ORC has done. So, um, I'll meet chapters that legal when it comes out under a packet.
Okay, um, move to the item number six. Um, y'all wanna speak to that now?
Uh, yes, please. If you were to look at the criteria that you selected for, um, uh, what issues are or what driveways would need remediation. One of them, item leveled in section, paragraph three, section D, talks about, um, how the roads change, um, the, you've got a piece of paper there, um, how the roads change the, uh, the character or the, the effectiveness of the, um, a little here. Where, where, where did it go? Nope, not that. Here it is. List of driveways, did the roadwork result in additional deterioration, i.e. water flow increase, directional change, or any possible damage that may have been caused during the 2023 road improvements project? That's exactly what our issue was. Um, and we brought that to you in October, we brought it to you in January, and we'll bring it to you today. We believe that the entire Spalding even numbered houses, um, are seeing very high water damage caused by the rains. Um, in the rainstorm that we had in February, um, the three inch rain that we had then, um, our front walk was completely impassable. We could not walk out of our house without going through about four inches of water. And that was due to the fact that the water no longer is carried away at the edge of the road, it is carried into our yard. The wa, way that we had the previous condition was we had a three inch ramp that went, made out of concrete, that went about a foot of beyond the, the base part of our concrete driveway that met the roadway. So it comes exactly under the criteria that was listed as, as the way the law says or the, or the ordinance says how you build your driveway. It met the road. Um, with the road surface being raised about four inches, that water now no longer goes along the edge of our, of the street. It now runs backwards into our driveway and into our yard. We need this fixed. Stop there.
Well, I just said that, like we said, we had promise after promise on the day that they tore off the foot of our driveway, that it would be fixed that day. That didn't happen, and so since then we've had promise after promise that it would be fixed. So we're a little perturbed that you chose five houses to address on your list, meaning whatever criteria you decided to meet. And, uh, we were not included in that, so that's, that's, you know, a bone of contention. And I might add that that was only three inches of rain that this happened. Um, Aurora LaBroom lives across the street from us. She's been living there since 1985. And she said never, since she's been there, has anybody ever not been able to get down the sidewalk and throw their house out of their front door with, without going out the garage. So we're really anticipating that we're gonna have even bigger problems should we get a five inch rain. So we need to do something about it. We need promises made, promises kept. We need not to be ignored. That's all I have to say.
And thank you.
Um, could I ask for a point of information, um, your exact address?
To Spalding Circle.
Thank you.
And by the way, our neighbors are having bad problems as well.
Yeah, I mean, same issues in four and six and eight and 10. And Aurora, who is 10 Wilson Circle. And number two Wilson Circle is a horrible case of flooding, um, to the point that they, a band, they decided to just sell the house. And it's now for sale for like below $300,000 just to try to get rid of the damn thing.
If I could, just add one more. Is, is that going up away from, from Aurora?
Correct, correct. We're all going, going toward the, yes, going, going up toward Palmer Lake.
Okay.
Yeah, two houses on the other side.
Kevin, one of the, one of the engineers, who are you with us, is it the 24?
Yeah, they'll be here with the 24.
The Bay Area?
Uh, Bay Area, I guess.
Uh, yes, 24 at the Bay Area.
All right, so I mean, I've read the report from the ad hoc council committee on the program to address driveway approach repairs post the 2023 road improvements. Uh, this starts on page 22 in your packet. So basically, we, we had a meeting with the engineers, um, about this item. This work was pending, I mean, you have a whole history there in, in the packet. I apologize, there's a couple typos and things. Essentially, the engineers were like, this is an excellent report and I have to thank staff for providing some of those photos for us. That was very helpful. It made the compilation of this final report a lot easier. Um, notes from the engineering meeting, essentially they'll have an estimated cost for top priority addresses April 24. Tom Kirk's statements, essentially repair of these areas will require mill and then five inches of asphalt. He believes it will be fairly easy to, to take care of this for us and get it, get a package together. The city does have the right to act in this area. It is considered the right of way. Uh, he did sort of echo that, that ongoing statement of that, in theory, these aprons are actually the, the residents to maintain typically. Uh, that's not really supported in our code, but given the way that the contract was stated with Alpha, he felt that Alpha more or less met their, their expectations because they were already released, there was no real way to go back to them. So if we proceed forward with this, it would be through a new, um, paving company. Maybe even Alpha might take, take it up, right? But it will be a new bid process. So that was kind of the summary of that meeting. Um, to slightly address public comment, I know we can't go back and forth. I think there's a little bit of confusion about what this program was meant to do and what it wasn't meant to do. It's not meant to address drainage. It was never meant to address drainage. In fact, drainage issues caused by road improvements are widespread throughout the city because the roads were literally completely re-engineered in their slope. So that means that there is new water direction throughout the city and many addresses are impacted. And the engineers are aware of that, and that is an ongoing side project. So, uh, these addresses were not selected because of drainage issues or water flow issues. And specifically in reference to item, um, to letter D, to clarify the meaning of what that means. So did the roadwork result in additional deterioration? Meaning, did the roadwork somehow make that road edge that was not repaired in the roadwork worse? And because is there more water flow, is it now rerouting more? And specifically on one of the addresses, it is, they're seeing more of that road gravel debris flowing into their driveway now um, because the water is flowing more appropriately. And that crumbling road edge is now deteriorating more and more, which is a concern for the health of our roads in total, right? Because that impacts the road, so its edges do. With that in mind, the five addresses were selected because they maintained significant deterioration and edging problem even after the roadwork was done. And we were able to establish that 98% of the time Alpha did make the aprons meet the road and did redo most of the aprons in the city, especially ones that were in bad condition. Unfortunately, these five addresses just didn't make the covenant. It wasn't because of any actual reason, it was just the arbitrary nature of how they were striking and, and that kind of business. So it, um, you know, council in their original motion, you can see, determines that we did want to try to address these problems and narrow down just how bad the work was, what would need to be happening. So that's just the report, essentially, we're gonna wait till the engineers come back with some kind of package and then we would make our final determination on this project and if we wanted to move forward with any additional repair in that area.
May I ask a question? Um, when you've been discussing with the engineers, the, I'm not sure I'm directing the question to the right person, but, so there's this part of just the road edges and how they're deteriorating, how they're possibly not meeting driveways. And then there's drainage, when the engineers come, they're gonna bring a package of all of it?
No, no, the draining issue, the drainage issues are big. That's way, you know, that's been going, we've actually been studying drainage issues for a couple years here. And we were able to establish that, like, essentially we didn't have enough money to proceed with some of the projects, even though we had that, that federal money come in and that federal money is secured and ready to use. It's not brought anywhere, it's not being used for anything else. But the drainage, especially now post the roadwork, is a lot more comprehensive program throughout the city. And it's gonna take, uh, it's, it's a different ballgame.
Um, also, thank you for mentioning that this really, these five were, were not relating to drainage. But, and we referenced what you were talking about, the infrastructure mobility panel will discuss drainage. That is one of their, their duties, and so you apply for that. That's a situation where, I mean, not alone, the engineers will do the balance of that work on it with this take direction. But that is a situation where things can be brought up in your meetings and discussed.
I have to agree with Mr. Formo on one thing. It's not a technicality, I think it's just, uh, it's just by, uh, language. Addition, it is not necessarily additional deterioration, but as soon as you say, for example, water flow increase or directional change, that did occur. Um, there is a water flow increase and there is a directional change, and I blame a lot of that. I know I'm getting into the study, but on McGregor, because McGregor is higher than it used to be and now it flows through yard after yard after yard, down into the Formo's yard and into their, into their walkway. I know because I sat there and watched it do it, which is maybe the best hydrology study you can do without actually seeing it happen. But, um, it is, aesthetically, it looks nice. Um, there is a little swail and it does work a little bit, but if there, like you said, if there were a big rain, don't tell what would happen. But I think McGregor Circle is gonna be the, the, the part that we're really gonna have to look at as your committee and, and make some real changes so that that will work, uh, for everybody down the line, all the way down to the corner across the road. Make that one. Any other questions? We'll move on to the regular meeting now. We don't have our presentation?
Nope, she said it would be, you know, she's coming, then you did.
All right, I will just put a hold on that. Councilman Grummer, the public hearing, they've changed. I move to amend previously adopted council public hearing date regarding possible updates to chapter 156 dot 057 fences being moved from March 27th, 2024 to April 10th, 2024.
Second.
The motion is to amend the council's public hearing date from the 27th of March to April 10th. Um, that's what the city has, we have it on this, so, um, so this is a valid. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice, have it. And this. Item number nine, it's got to take appropriate action on the ordinance review committee on, uh, fences, this is yours, your book of mind?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna issue two different main motions under this item. And because I would like to talk about each one separately, uh, however, it was the joint package that came from ORC. So my first mention is that the city of Wood Creek issued an official statement regarding electronic electric fences and promote the use of signs warning others of their use.
Second. Second, uh, I'll turn to me to the Grummer.
So in honor of preserving everyone's time, you can see the reports produced by the ORC chairperson as a result of the discussion of his committee. There, you know, there are more information than is worth even digging into at this point in time. But essentially, uh, Mayor Asco did request that they review, um, the electric, electronic fences. They did, they discussed them, they reviewed state code, R code. They didn't find that R code was lacking or in contradiction with anything. But what they did find was that essentially, people don't realize that these fences don't actually constitute under control. So our laws, our rules, everything says, you know, your dog is supposed to be under control when it's outside of your home or outside of a, a, a barrier, physical barrier. And most people assume these electric fences are considered under control because in theory their dog doesn't think it out. But the reality is a human being, there is no barrier to enter the dog's environment and prevent that human being from interacting with a dog that's out of control because the barrier is invisible to the eye, right? And then there's also the issues of sometimes the dogs getting loose or the collars and these things malfunctioning. So while we can't necessarily pro-pivot them because essentially they are allowed to be used by state law, what people don't understand is that they are not, your dog is not in control. So if somebody gets bit on your property, you are legally liable. And then, so the reason I'm suggesting today that the city issue a statement and just kind of remind people that this doesn't constitute as in control, that you, you need to have flags and signs out to, to appropriate designate that your dogs, specifically in front yards where people are not anticipating dogs to be, especially if that invisible fence goes all the way to the road or even close. Like, if you're gonna walk up to somebody's door and run into dogs that are loose and, right, you know, there was no sign. So that was my suggestion, is that the city sort of issue that statement. Uh, we can't promote like a place to buy the signs, but we could maybe show an example of a sign in that email somehow and say, hey, like, you know, please consider putting these up for the safety of your neighbors and your dogs that matter.
And it's not just the streets, though.
Yeah, it's the golf course, it's especially relevant, especially if you don't have, I mean, like, if you let your dog on the golf course with these fences and a golfer hits the ball into your yard, that golfer might proceed in there. And then if that golfer gets bit and decides to sue you, you are liable 100% for those medical bills or any kind of whatever. And so, um, they did speak with, uh, you know, officials about this, ORC did, and they echoed that thing since then of like, yeah, we don't really love these fences, did they give us false sense of security? And it's not-
So, proof on the website, announcements. Proof on the website, announcements. I've got some nice sightseeing pictures here.
Yeah, I mean, just kind of reminding citizens, it's, it's one of those things that should maybe be just like. Somewhere all the time, really, just to remind people, especially because of the golf course in particular.
Yeah, but we can't, we can't forbid them. So we're going to put an ordinance or amend that ordinance to, to change that, but we need to have information. Especially on the website, but even, even the occasional email that goes out with the sort of Wood Creek, Wood Creek bats.
Council, council could ask for legal assistance along this to have a more, you know, professional review of what we could do if we wanted to move forward. That just wasn't what O R C's recommendation was. So in alignment as their liaison, I'm just representing. What came out of their meeting essentially. They didn't issue the statement of the email and all that discussion, but that was brought up as a viable solution. In the meeting of like, what should we do? What could we do?
I believe this is a reasonable way to go about this at this point. The signs are great, but something that people who do have electric, that's electronic, that's whatever you want to call them. That they check the batteries on a regular basis because that is what is going to keep that dog. And then, and then test it, test it, because the little collar, you can just go out and it'll tell you how far you can go. And you can even put your fingers on them. Those spikes are not that bad most of the time for most of these dogs. Um, I mistakenly did something like that to a poor little dog one time and it squealed. But because it was too hot, turned it down to five. He got the message very good and never getting it.
I thought it asked a little.
You have a video of that? So I mean, does Scott feel like y'all have enough information, sort of maybe like add an image of the sign?
We can talk about it later.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's pretty simple. All right, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I missed vote. Okay, and then the second was regarding schedule four.
Yes, so the motion is that council consider the revised schedule four drafted by the ordinance review.
I second.
So at this point in time, this is not an action motion with purpose because they don't know what council will decide to do with this. So this is for discussion purposes, for us to be able to consider this. And then if we want to take an action, we can issue that motion. For, you know, in reference to whatever we decide. In there you will see basically, to summarize this. Some of the individuals of the O R C. There's two components here. Address the one that's necessary at this point. Essentially, our junk vehicles definition has to coincide with state law. However, even the state law is maybe lacking in a little bit of an update at this point in time, since they have changed their registration and. Plating procedures for how to determine a vehicle is legal on the road. So they have suggested some edits in that language to be more relevant. For how the state regulates vehicles now. And kind of leave it more, a little bit more open-ended. So that should the state change the rules again, we don't have to come back in here and keep touching it over and over unless it's a significant change. So there's that component, right? To make the junk vehicles definition a little bit more appropriate. The second component was that some members of the O R C wanted to discuss certain class of R V types. Because right now the city doesn't differentiate between them and larger R V, like fifth wheels that are our actual obstructions to view, which is the whole. Kind of like legal backing behind why we don't allow a lot of recreational vehicle parking long-term here. Because our streets are small, narrow, line of sight, pedestrian, you know, we just, we can't have. We just don't have the space for everybody to park all this stuff all the time, right? But these classy R Vs look and look like daily drivers, some of them. We have work vehicles already parked here that are on the same chassis. And so it's really hard to determine, is this an R V or not? They also don't, you don't, like, they don't present the same problems that the other R Vs do, right? And Mr. Brummer was here. I'm not going to say whether or not he supported or anything, that's for him to talk about. But one of the things he did acknowledge was that it can be a little bit complicated to. When you have like a Sprinter van to decide if it's an R V or not, right? Because he would actually need to see the inside of it. And you can't do that. That's not legal for an entered property to be, you know, scoping out the interior of vehicles. So he did acknowledge that challenge with some of our, you know, if you were going to go down the route of differentiation. He just, you know, asked that it be very clear and something that he could actually enforce. Because he's not going to come out with measuring tapes and, you know, this and that. So we just, if we do decide to do anything with the rules here, we need to be very. Thoughtful of his challenges.
Edmond Brummer.
Thank you. City attorney's here, correct?
Yes, he is online. Give him a minute to unmute.
Thank you.
He said on message.
Does this keep muting me or what?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay.
Um, my question is, um, could you go to page thirty-eight of our packet?
Sure.
Under the schedule for city parking, section B, it has a list. I'm sorry, what?
Um, I just have the agenda pulled up with links. I don't have a physical packet. Is there, which, which, what, what document should I be going to?
Page thirty-eight.
But he doesn't have the packet.
If you click.
Website, so he can get into it if he has access to the website.
Well, I'll just read one short, and I'll read it to you. It says parking on private property of buses. Commercial vehicles, trailers, boats, motorhomes, R Vs. Campers, jet skis and the like is prohibited unless fully enclosed in a garage. Or storage space or behind a privacy fencing on a durable surface, except on a temporary basis. Temporary shall be defined as not to exceed twenty-four hour periods total in any thirty day period. My question is. What is the state's code that allows? Or gives the authority of the city to. Regulate those specific vehicles? I looked at six oh one. And it was, like a lot of my questions when I would do searches, I'd find six oh one, point oh oh one, I believe. Which is very heavy and it's parking on private property. A municipality by ordinance may regulate the parking of other vehicles on private property. And may enforce the ordinance in the same manner that it enforces ordinances regulating parking in public, no parking zones. Including camping of vending vehicles. Is that the passage that the city is using as their argument for specifying specific vehicles? Or is there?
I have. So I'm, I'm looking at page thirty-eight. And. At least it says on the bottom in a little square at thirty-eight. Is that what I'm supposed to be looking at, that page?
That's correct.
Okay, and what was the?
B as in void?
B as in void, parking on private property, buses, commercial vehicles, trailers, butters, okay. I don't know what, I mean, the, the Texas transportation code is, is. Large and I don't have it memorized. And I'm not sure if there's a particular provision of the transportation code that deals with this you, this issue. I can tell you that. Um, this doesn't look like it's in our zoning code. Is this a zoning? It's not. It's just, it's in the city's parking code. I can tell you that you, the cities have authority off the top of my head. I can tell you that cities have authority to regulate. What type of vehicles are stored, like as opposed to day-to-day use. On properties and cities do that all the time in their zoning codes. Because there's a difference between the storage of a vehicle and the parking of a vehicle. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But as, as this was, as far, as far as this specific issue and the authority to regulate the parking on private property. Um, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't have it memorized well enough to know, you know, a specific statutory.
Searching for it and I was. Even like the transportation code is massive, but I couldn't ever find any authorization that gives our city specific. Because mostly, most of the parking is about sidelines. And so we could, the city could possibly regulate based on the size of something we, the, but we couldn't say, well, but it can't be a Toyota. You know, or it can't, you know, like, it can't be blue. We can't describe the vehicle other than its. Size and how it affects sightlines is my understanding of what I've read so far. But what I wouldn't, where I'm heading with this is. Could we entertain that question further with this particular part of parking? That we do send it to the city attorney at some point when we go to revise.
I move to send the O R C's recommendation for schedule for city parking to legal. For consideration of their recommendations and the chapter as a whole. For suggestions and to be placed in full ordinance format.
I second.
Mr. Mayor. We talked about sidelines. Sidelines don't always come into play here, I don't believe. Because if you have a long enough driveway, it won't matter. If, if it's close to the right way or in the right way, then it might matter. So it depends on, on what the, the real objective is here. One of the things that I, I came from a place where every other house had either a trailer. Or big old motorhome or whatever, either in the driveway or even on the street. And, and I knew, I know what that looks like compared to here. It's a very different look. So are you talking about the site itself or sidelines? Because if, if it's the optics of it, then that's a very different thing than sidelines and needs to be differentiated.
Yes, but my understanding, as a city, our role is not to regulate aesthetics. Like we don't make decisions just on, oh, they have a purple house. We don't like purple houses. We're going to ban purple houses. It's about, well, how does that purple quality affect? You know, safety, health and welfare.
Like you can't cover your house in mirrors, you know? Kind of, even if you like them, the exterior of your house can't be covered in mirrors. And so Bob's question is pertinent in that he, you know, people might not like looking at people's R Vs. I don't know that the city has a right to regulate that. I, I won't get into that and legal could probably give us more, if they review this, give us more information on that front. What I do know that we have a right to regulate is traffic and safety. And my house could never park an R V safely and I know that. We, we would only park it temporarily ever. Same with any of the large vehicles, Jacob drives or trailers and things. We just don't have the risk, right? But Bob's point is there are addresses here where somebody and people do park. Large things and it's not interfering traffic flow. So that's kind of what council needs to decide because we can't say only Barbara with five acres gets to have them, right? So it has to be uniform, but we need to be realistic about what size is going to be a, a real problem for the city on a larger scale, you know? Because really only Brookmeadow has the luxury of like large scale parking for the most part.
Long brothers.
Yeah.
May I provide a point of information for the council?
Go ahead.
If you go online and go to our city code of ordinances, which can be. Access to the main webpage and it says code of ordinances. The, the, and you look up the schedule city parking under the traffic code. And look at the very bottom of that ordinance, it says that it is referenced from. Or the last ordinance update regarding parking was twenty-two dash three oh four. And if you open up that ordinance. On the left side of the screen in that, in the ordinance page, it says, to answer your question, council member Brummer. Pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, section six zero one dot zero one.
Uh, I mean, I have seventy.
If you scroll to the bottom of that schedule and you see the list of ordinances that have previously been amended under that.
So I did look at six oh one point oh one, so we just said.
Right, that's what the, that ordinance.
But, well, okay, that's why I was asking you the question, because when I read it, it says, if we regulate parking on private property, it has to be the exact same way. That we regulated on and I, I have it right, try to me. It had, in the same manner that it enforces ordinances regulating parking in public, no parking zones. Which is, I don't quite.
I think we just need more legal.
Yeah, I, that's what, that's what I was thinking for. It's like, I mean, I, that reference. It sounded like, well, we can only do it if we do it equally.
Well, to be fair, I wrote those for your asses.
The motion, the motion on the floor is to send it to the city attorney for review and, and guidance.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. We got a vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
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 May opposed? Ascension, no, that's unanimously. There was the motion to discuss. That's fine.
Motion to consider.
Consider it, so. Number ten.
There's nothing to write on for that?
Yeah.
Um, Justice Member Bailey?
Hey.
Of the providing the creation of the infrastructure mobility panel.
Yes. The action is discuss and take action to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-four, three twenty-eight oh one. And you should have that in your packet. This, in this one, we've been working on finessing the final. The final document form and. This, this panel hasn't been out for me yet because you've been perfecting the ordinance. But I think it's time to, to accept the ordinance and. It hung with it. So I move that we adopt. Ordinance twenty twenty-four, oh three, twenty-one, one, amending the city Wood Creek code of ordinances. At title free administration, chapter thirty, officials, employees and organizations. Providing for the creation of the infrastructure and mobility panel.
Mr. Mayor, good. I've read this completely. I've read this completely and. I like the form and, and the structure and I believe that it will make. Make the, the going much easier in the future and the idea of putting all of these things together into one panel that will. Take these things up, especially since we pretty much completed the street at this point, except for some, some slight modifications. The other things need to be tackled and this panel would be good for that job. Also that the people that were previously nominated, I think will make the end of this the next thing. But we'll make a good start to the panel.
Sir, I look to postpone this, or sorry, table it. Till after the workshop. Because this document is also in the workshop and something that is discussed during the whole totality of it.
I've got your note. I chose not to do that, but go ahead. I mean, I just thought that it would be. I, yeah, I mean, we, there was some communication to, to switch some things around and in my mind. You know, we, we should have a mobility panel approved. Um, and then we're workshopping panels that are approved. We're, we're shopping panels that are already in there, so this keeps. It puts the mobility, the infrastructure mobility panel at the same level with the others. That's, that was my thing.
I didn't do the second, so.
All right. So any discussion about the motion?
I just want to add to council member Bailey's point, because I did at times help produce this draft. It incorporated a lot of the work that's going to be brought up in the workshop already. Because some of those came before this, so we had that advantageous situation. And then we had the added benefit of additional consultation with legal. Where he was able to ask more nuanced questions of how our city operates and we were able to provide him with more explicit information in regards to like. Alternates and some of these things that were still kind of wobbling in our ordinance. Uh, and so hopefully this will actually serve as a pretty solid template for the other ones later in the meeting. for the other ones later in the meeting, because it has had that, you know, all of that input plus them got it to this point. So I do su- support it and do feel like it's pretty strong. Um, I did have questions about the order of tonight's meeting, but I also was willing to just kind of let the cards fall. Um, so I, I don't have a problem with approving it now, just knowing that whatever comes out of the workshop might end up touching this again. So.
So, um, no further discussion, I'll vote on the, on the motion to adopt ordinance two zero two four dash oh three dash two eight dash oh one, amending the city.
Mr. Mayor. It's dash two seven, I believe. At least that's what he did on this one up here.
On the ordinance, it is, it's tough and, and it's not.
Okay, so this, I would agree with that, the agenda. So, I'll vote twenty-four dash oh three dash two seven.
Which one's right?
The second one, okay, yeah. The, the dates, man.
Twenty-seven or twenty-eight?
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
It's the twenty-seventh.
It's twenty-seven.
So it would be the twenty-seventh, right? Cause that's.
Yeah, whatever day it is.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, so twenty-four dash oh three dash two seven dash zero one. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Um, amending the city ordinances, providing for the creation of infrastructure mobility panel. On paper, please say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any mayes, ascension? Vote, we'll move on to number eleven. I'll say yours, Councilmember Bailey, on the nominations for the, we're calling the IM, the Infrastructure Mobility Panel.
Okay, the action is to discuss and take appropriate action, make full-time member nominations to the Infrastructure Mobility Panel. Um, these, the people, uh, you can see in your packet, there are four applications. And these volunteers have been patient, they've been willing to. And so, um, I would like to proceed to accepting, uh, these members to, to be an infrastructure mobility panel now. Yes. All right.
So everybody up here would have an appointment today.
Right.
Um, I will say that there is actually a fifth person and I don't know that her application is in yet. But Lydia Johns, who's currently a member on P and Z, has expressed significant interest in joining this panel. So if somebody would like to reserve her, um, we can't nominate her today without her application. But she has confidently expressed willingness to join and interest.
So if you want to list which council members, which member, y'all can do that.
Yeah, we'll go by seniority, um, and if that's okay with everyone.
Like age or what? Year of, it would be year of election.
Okay, we'll go by my favorites, go ahead. I've nominated Brock Holt, I've nominated previous, okay. Can we take all the nominations as a group and vote, or do you want to go one by one? What's your, what's your wish?
I nominate Jay Galloway.
You have a.
Well, um, I hope once Lydia's application comes in, somebody will consider her. But in the effort of like just getting business done today, I'll go ahead and nominate Jose Formo.
And, um, Grummer? I was gonna best seniority, I mean, he, he, he can pass.
I will pass.
I, I would nominate Craig Davis.
All right, so we have on the table, Mr. Holt, nominated by Mr. Hendrick, Mr. Galloway, nominated by Ms. Bailey, Mr. Formo, nominated by Mayor President Hines, and Mr. Biggs, nominated by Councilmember Richardson. Um, on paper in those nominations, please raise your hand.
All right.
Hi, honey, thank you.
May I ask?
And, welcome.
This is, this is Cindy Longo Cassidy from the Hays, this is Cindy, this is Cindy Longo Cassidy.
Yes, I, I gathered.
I apologize for being like.
I think that will be John. So we'll make those notes, um, reach out to.
I'm emailing her right now.
Ms. Gons, to get that application in and so we'll, we'll be over to the next meeting. Um, just enjoy your experience.
And I thank you very much.
Thank you for the service, yes, appreciate it in advance.
It's so nice when people actually step up and, and, and follow through with, uh, joining the team.
Yeah.
And that's worth giving feedback.
That's how a lot of us get started, is like, I gotta plug this, you all, no, I'm just gonna go be a part of it. Fighting from the inside, right? All right, so, um, so that takes care of number eleven. I'm gonna jump back to item number seven, a presentation by Cindy Longo Cassidy, um, the Joint Hays County Friends of the Night Sky in Dark Sky County, by Quality Meter Program.
Yeah.
Laura Jures.
Thank you. Good. You can watch me up here or you can stare at it. I can stare at you. Okay, I'll take that. Okay, well, I'm going to, um, tell y'all about a program that is a partnership between Dark Sky Texas and Hays County Friends of the Night Sky. I am, um, a local Hays County Master Naturalist. And we put together a program called Hays County Friends of the Night Sky, where we have not only master naturalists in our county, but also, um, non-master naturalists. But so about, the membership of that group is about half and half. And, um, we're partnering with Dark Sky Texas, which I put on my other hat, I also happen to lead um, at this point in time. So we're piloting a program that's created a network of volunteers operating sky quality meters. And we're starting with the Hays County. So far, we've got about sixteen locations with volunteers taking meter readings around the county. These are the, this is the type of information that scientists can use or general public can use. You can use and say, oh, this is what's happening. This is trending with what's happening with our sky as we see all the development happening around us. Um, it is, it's also, um, of interest to scientists worldwide. So we'll be sending the data to a project called the Globe at Night, which is a citizen science project that is worldwide. So we'll have, have it displayed for us here in Texas as well as share that data worldwide. Um, the, the project will, it's updated from both handheld units and continuous review units. And I brought as an example for you to see a continuous review unit. And this goes down in, in very sophisticated, um, housing, I won't, I'll speak facetious. It, it's basically a PVC tube with the top and a bottom that has a clear, a clear piece on top that allows it to then, um, you know, take the reading of what the sky is like. And, and, um, for the Globe at Night, it wants the nights when you don't have the moon interfering. The continuous read will do it every night, which is something that the scientists do want, all of that data. This is, you know, this and a little battery charger, or you can get the one that had, is, um, solar power that actually keeps the batteries charged. The handheld unit is, oh, about the size of from here up. And literally you go out and stand and click a button and it re- gives you a number on it. It's very simple and, you know, easy, easy to use. This one is, um, the type that, that I have at my home. I've done the handheld for years, but I like having this because it will continually take, you know, whether I'm at home or not. And then on a whatever schedule I want, I could take it down like once a month or once every three months, because it has enough space to hold the data. And go in and instead of having this hooked to it, I have another little cord that hooks it to my computer, downloads a file, and then that file, I can just email off, it's small. I could email it all to the Globe at Night people and to our team that is, um, gonna be using the data here locally. We are building a dashboard that will, um, graphically display the data as well as have mapping of it, so you can go, um, you won't be able to go to the exact location where a meter is, is, um, installed. But within a quarter mile of that, we don't want, you know, anybody who might have go intent to know exactly where they are to come and, and, um, remove, so to speak. So, um, we'll also have information explaining the, the importance of the data. We would love to have Wood Creek decide to have at least one of these in your community. We have volunteers, we've got two master naturalists at least that live in Wood Creek who said, I could probably, um, you know, monitor that equipment and, um, have that to, to provide data. This is also the type of data that has to be turned in with the annual report for any Dark Sky community. Uh, I think right now Jamie Kencov has been doing a handheld and coming over and taking that data. He's very excited about this project and is involved in it too, so that's part of it. We have, um, um, obtained a discount on the equipment. These continuous reads are normally, I think, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Through June, we can get them for two hundred and eighty-three plus, plus shipping. Shipping's about sixty-five dollars because they come from Canada. So we can, we can order those, we have a link for discount on those. The handheld are normally about one fifty-five and we can currently get them for one oh three plus shipping. And shipping on those are like the thirty-seven fifteen, for last time I checked. So, um, you know, so you may have somebody on city council says, whoa, that sounds like fun. I wouldn't mind a do that. But we probably have volunteers that can do it if y'all don't want to. I, I would encourage you to consider participating in this program and having a city-owned one that you can, um, put up on city property, or you can have somebody who you say, yes, we're okay with it being whatever location you want. So that's what, that's what's going on with those, the sky quality meter project in Hays County. Any questions about that?
I had no idea.
Well, I actually had a citizen who's, I, I don't know if he's got his master naturalist, but he was pursuing it. He notified me about this and asked if the city would consider purchasing one and putting it here. And it said, bring forward an item. So, um, we can't take action because this is just the report. But we can bring it up on another agenda if it was something council. So just to be clear, that's your app, is that maybe the city considers purchasing one for the city to, to input data or that, just to announce that there are any residents interested in doing that?
My ask would be for the city to purchase at least one and to, um, you know, be, be the owner of it. But we could have, um, a master naturalist who would actually monitor the equipment, call the data and supply it to this project, so that it would be part of the data that goes in and shows what's going on in Hays County as well as statewide.
Um, you described a whole tube system, is that part of the purchase?
The purchase includes that weatherproof housing. It does not include the one that has the, the solar panel that keeps the batteries charged. Um, I've got a friend who's been doing this a long time and he said that, you know, he's had these, these batteries, it doesn't use a lot of battery and it, a lot of charge. And he's had them last, you know, for several years.
Oh, one battery?
Well, it's a pack, they get the pack.
It's required recharge?
Yes.
And you, we, we would need a master naturalist specifically to hold the data, where else?
No, okay. You could have anybody who volunteers. We have a, an individual who actually lives over in Wimberly, who is in charge of training all of the people who are doing the monitoring. So we would work with them to get it set up correctly, because you download a, um, a small program on your computer. And, um, then that is used to actually set up the, um, equipment. You know, set up parameters by which it will operate. And he can help, we, he's written that, that out. He's also gone and helped people specifically get their setup, get it installed, teach them how to download it when it's time to download. We've got training covered. So it can be, it does not have to be a master naturalist.
Um, you said the cost was about, for the permit, was two hundred and eighty-three dollars?
Yeah, two eighty-three plus about sixty-five dollars in shipping.
Does that include the battery?
Yes, oh, I'm trying to think. I think one set of batteries came, came with it. It includes the battery pack and I, I believe one set came with it.
And what is, if we put this on a motion, what's the name?
It's a sky quality meter by Unihedron. And, um, the, that's the company name. Let me give you a copy of this. And it has all of that information in it. I apologize, I did not know how many copies to make. Share, y'all give.
Yeah, we can share.
That is a very important question.
So how long has it been, how long has the program been going on here, Cindy?
In Hays County, we started it last fall. So it's pretty new. Um, I have been doing sky quality meter readings and, um, because I'm, I'm the one that, that, um, started doing it for the city of Girthing Springs.
Okay.
So I started that in about twenty-eleven? Yeah. Yeah.
Or sometimes.
So, yeah, so I've been using this equipment since, since then. But, um, we just decided to get this project together last summer and have had people defining it and figuring out who's gonna do it and, and getting the discount lined up and getting some equipment ordered and, um.
How long is the discount?
It's through June, through mid-June, like June nineteenth. And we could probably get another discount, um, set up again. But the discount is there for those of us who will be not only putting it on the, the dad board for, um, you know, that will be used in Texas, but where we also send that file to the Globe at Night Citizen Science Project.
So, another specific question. So if council in a future meeting decides that, yes, we'd like to purchase one, would we just hand you the money so that you purchase it?
No, you would purchase it.
So I didn't know, you were talking about the, the discount applies to you, I didn't know a bit of this.
No, anybody with the link that I have on there and I can give you a hot link.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you get an email, it's a good.
Exactly, I can, I can.
Mr. Mayor, if y'all want, let us know, for three hundred dollars, we can buy one. We don't have to go through a formal process here for, for getting this done. Three hundred dollars.
No motion required?
No, no motion required.
It seems reasonable to contribute because we like the Dark Sky's designation.
Well, just, y'all just have to find somebody to.
Justin Camp is a resident who approached me about this.
You can, well, we'll buy it, y'all figure out where to put it and we'll get it done. And then we go on.
But if you want your own.
Correct, anybody else can, whatever, but we'll do it.
Hundred's three dollars if you want your own handheld.
Sounds like council's impressed, so we'll, we'll just go ahead and get it. Sounds like council is interested, so we'll, we'll just go ahead and get it in. We'll order it.
Okay. And I can, I can send Suzanne the, the hotline.
Yeah, if you want to coordinate with her.
And, and Justin has the hotline too.
Well, he, I mean, we're trying to, we still need a volunteer to probably do the data collection. So I might contact us and, and the same.
Justin's definitely interested. He's been participating in getting it done.
Yeah.
Yeah, if that's a decision, being a volunteer for the city device. Oh, we're, but if we don't have a volunteer, I'd be second.
And Beverly, I'm sorry, we have, there's another person who was interested in backing him up possibly. But Justin knows it better too. So, so we, I think we had the, the volunteer covered, but if some of y'all wanted to participate also, that's easy enough. Yeah, Rebecca, that is, is also a master naturalist.
Yeah, we, we've worked her pretty hard.
Yes, we do.
Any other questions for Cindy? Well, thank you. We'll get this done.
Yes, thank you.
Rebecca.
Picture for accepting the dark sky, the eyeglasses, the solar goggles. Y'all want to get a vote?
Get a vote? Do we get a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you have any added verdicts?
Thinking that, I mailed my last.
There we go.
If I can pose you guys, if y'all can all get up.
For fifty dollars. This thing goes away, this is for you for a hundred.
Oh, my God.
If you can stand.
I have these cheaper at my house still.
Y'all gotta get up and come to the table. I'm gonna give these to you.
And then, and I'll hand them.
If you can hand one to Mayor Rascal, whichever side he wants to stay.
We're in recess for a couple of minutes. Five eighteen. All right, we are going into, our work hour at this time is five eighteen. Five nineteen, discuss all of our advisory body ordinances, including the, the six that are listed here on the agenda. So I'll turn it over to Mayor Burton Hines.
Uh, yeah, so staff, I asked staff to attach the current versions of all of these things because I didn't have access to some of them. And Council member was able to give me two of them, but he didn't have access to all of them. And also, you know, some are getting, have been updated. You know, there was like things staff had to do to them. So even the one that was in the packet wasn't attachable. Does this make sense? So as far as I know, what's in your packet is the current version of everything. I'll just cut right to the chase, and I believe that we should pass literally all of these to legal and say, make them all the same in forms of substance except for where they must deviate. Because, and I'll use the I N M as the, the lead, because we've refined the language. We've perfected it. We use, we use an old code as the model. We've progressed past that. Our legal team has caught inconsistencies in definitions and all these kind of things that it was just sort of all over the place. So that was my recommendation. I did have a couple of questions even in the I N M panel though, that I, I wanted to bring up. And so if anybody has specific issues, maybe look at the I N M panels. Use that as your lead, because that is the most thoroughly updated one. Everyone should also keep in mind that P and Z cannot be exact like the others. And P and Z has one alteration. If y'all remember specifically doing away with alternate members because of the issues with maybe alternates don't attend as much. And P and Z is making some very big important reports, sort of recommendations. And we need the people voting on that stuff to be very, very accountable. And so that's why that alternate member thing was removed.
Since you've mentioned P and Z, could I go ahead and just kind of talk about my notes? So I showed the ordinance that you have in the packet, the way to P and Z as a report to council. They had interesting discussion. They expressed, so I explained that, that the ordinance would, the way it was written would start at the time of passage, that those elected for a three-year term would still serve up their three-year term. P and Z expressed change, possibly changing the language that when it becomes a two-year term, it starts then, that the passage of the P and Z ordinance.
This actually basically doing a reset on.
Yes. And then this would give the newly elected governing body, the bill needs to nominate or re-nominate. And I thought it was interesting. It was their suggestion to just make it an ordinance written in such a way that it becomes effective at that date and it negates. So I would ask the city attorney, he did say he could write it that way. So I'd ask the city attorney to write it that way. They also expressed concern over going from five members to seven members when it came to form. I think that they've been having issues with getting form, having that member show up. There may be solutions to that, but I just wanted to express their concern. You know, and also when, if P and Z ever does have a special meeting, that form gets quite high for seven members. And then I just, I, I just kind of wanted to ask the city attorney to me specifically that the language across all the boards, is that the chair sets the meetings and times and dates of their meetings? And then when it comes to P and Z specifically, city attorney, this is a question. Is he there?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Is there, is there something specifically in state code that requires planning and zoning to have regular and special meetings? Or could the chair, based on his members, express a certain date and then just set the date that way? And that's automatically a regular meeting?
Yeah, there's nothing in state law that dictates, you know, that they hold, you know, regular, special meetings. Usually the only thing that, that dictates that is, you know, if there are submissions and there are certain deadlines that needed to be, that need to be met. But other than that, no, there's nothing in state law.
Okay, so then when we get to the P and Z portion of it, because we say they have regular and special meetings, I would like to possibly get rid of that or have you review that. And so that it allows the chair to set the meetings based on their members' ability to show up. And, and I would like that across all advisory boards. So we don't have, have less issues about form. So we're accommodating the volunteers, not, and I don't.
Isn't P and Z subject to Toma? Yes. So that overrules that. Except for the other boards. Which, if you look at the I N M panel, it's, it's satisfied. Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask because in the current P and Z ordinance, it does say very much special.
What do you?
So, so what, how that's been determined is that a regular meeting has been then decided, like, like a council does. Council sets a meeting by resolution that happens at this time, at this date, happens at this time, this date, and those become regular meetings. Anything outside of that becomes a special meeting.
Requiring it. Larger.
Form becomes larger. So the chair and the committee were saying, well, that can become difficult because it doesn't allow the chair to accommodate the volunteers' time.
So, so, I mean, if we write P and Z's ordinance, I mean, any of the ordinances say that, you know, that it's not required, you know, regular versus stretchy meetings. I mean, everything's a regular meeting. If it's assigned, we don't worry so much about form because you're, you know, all building the meeting around. So if you have a, if you have a seven-person panel, you know, you call the meeting because six of the seven, you know, are going to be there.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure our language is written, we can tell it will accommodate that. Also, you know, this was actually the city attorney's advice to me on a previous ordinance advisory board ordinance, and I'm sure he'll do this. But when we go through the advisory board, we must remove the staff posting notices so that, so council can attend advisor board meetings. And I'm sure you didn't go and check that and remove that.
Go back over that.
Wait, which one?
The last, under Toma, if we have this, staff must post notices regarding councils attending advisory boards. The city attorney's advice and all.
You're not the agendas, not the ordinances.
Right.
It's in.
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's in your, I've seen it in your ordinances, and I recommend taking it out for a variety.
Okay.
Wait, where are the ordinances?
Well, we have, yeah, we're, we're only talking ordinances. But yes, they'll see it. I know what he, they'll see it. I'm just kind of putting it back in.
Is it in any of the ordinances in this workshop? With, I mean.
I don't have it right in me.
Yeah, I mean, where I'm not, I would like to see page number so we can.
Okay.
I mean, because on page sixty, I can't find the reference to special meeting or whatever under P and Z, how it's different.
Just nine one thirty-four, since regular and special meetings open to the public.
Yeah, so. The P and Z one does say that the commission will follow parliamentary procedure adopted by city council. That is different than any of the others. We don't regulate any of the others in that manner. So that is the difference. That binds, not only binds the commission, P and Z, to Toma, but also binds them to whatever council decides in regards to Roberts rules. None of the other boards are bound in that same manner to either one, Toma or Roberts rules. Which, I mean, that's what the point of the workshop is, to consider how, do we want to tell these as advisory boards how to do these things, or do we not? You know, do we want to let them decide how strict they're going to be with Roberts rules?
I think from what we've seen in the past and, and the participation that we've seen in the past, when we allow them to be a little more relaxed in the way that they run their meetings, they're more likely to want to be on those committees as opposed to saying that you must go by strict Roberts rules and by all you better have a parliamentary in there or else, is what it comes down to, it seems. And none of these basically would, given the choice, they would rather go with the more relaxed way rather than the strict Roberts rules. And we have to do that with, with P and Z. So yes, by all means. But with the others, it really depends on what the character is of that particular commission, about how they want to run that within certain guidelines. I mean, they have to begin the meeting, they have to end the meeting, they have to have an agenda. They have to do those sorts of things because that's kind of what the fire can expect it. But other than that, there aren't any really strict guidelines they must go through. Yeah, the conduct of a meeting of, of any of our advisory board is sort of subject to the whims of the chairperson, you know. And, and we've had some that are, you know, a little bit more strict on Roberts rules and some that are scared to, of Robert.
Well, and it's also training levels. So, you know, once you have a lot of training in it, it's, your comfort level's different than just being thrown in as chairperson in your first meeting and.
Right, and you're supposed to follow by the rules. But like, I've been to, I've, I've attended meetings of all of the advisory boards, I guess. I'm sure I have at least, at least a few of each. And, and, you know, I find it interesting to, to see the, see the back and forth on the committees and the advisory boards. But also, they're pretty quick to reach out to the audience and say, you know, what do you think? Or have an audience member raise their hand and be recognized, which I don't like. You know, I think it makes for better involvement, better governance.
So I'll be just, Mayor Burton Hines, page sixty-five, the tree board. Parks, page seventy, O R C, page seventy-five.
Okay. But it's only in those three, I guess?
Yes.
Can you read this, please?
Tree board, page sixty-five, parks, page seventy, O R C, page seventy-five. City staff shall post notice of form for all meetings of the ordinance review committee so that the members of the governing body may attend all meetings of the ordinance review committee. So, but that kind of language he explained needs to be removed.
Yeah, and also probably offer agendas.
Yeah, but we don't have that front of us.
No, but I mean, he can hear us. So staff can hear us. We don't need to direct that because it shouldn't be there. I did have a question on page, open my notebook, page sixty, I believe it was. Nope, hold on. All right, guys. I lost it. Well, I've been kind of thought about it in, in all of them, right? We're consistently still calling these people officers. A previous attorney told us that was inappropriate. So like on all of these things, it's like, if you look at page seventy-five, thirty point seventy-five, the title is officers. We're referring to them as officers. Is this language appropriate, Charlie? Should it be changed? Should they be called something else?
It's officers describing the chairperson and vice chair, just for clarification.
Yeah, so if, if they're, yeah, that's the, that's the key. If we're using the term officers of the, of the border committee, that's appropriate. If we're referring to that border committee as a whole as officers, that would be, that wouldn't be accurate.
Okay, so this is good to stand. And then my last question is on page seventy-nine. It's referencing line item one fifty-nine. I'm a little bit confused, and if you go up two, two lines, this is something I wanted to show the council that we kind of changed in this panel. On one fifty-seven, line one fifty-seven, it says the panel shall keep minutes of its proceedings. A majority of the regular panel members of the forum for the, yeah, so. And then right below that, it says the city, the secretary's sole role. And so this, this is not the city secretary. This is the secretary of the panel. And I just wanted to highlight that and make sure that that language is secure enough there, that people are going to understand what that means.
So maybe put the word, the committee's secretary or the board's secretary, to really specify that it's not the city secretary.
I don't know that it needs it. I just wanted y'all's opinion. Because the first time I read it, I was like, oop, and then.
It does say that officers include chairperson and vice-chairperson and secretary.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
I mean.
Out of A and B.
Because it's not the city secretary, right? It's different, but I just wanted to make sure everybody saw that because that was a pretty significant.
Well, all you have to do is that the I N M panel secretary, just insert that before secretary.
And then for every board.
There's.
Except for P and Z. That's the city secretary in that case.
I would, I have quite a few things to add. Just, well, I'd like to talk to get an update from staff regarding a now staff set a lot to put together comparative analysis. Which of these ordinances, but which of the ordinances have not been finalized?
Not been finalized, planning and zoning have not been finalized.
Excuse me?
Do you have some kind of report that we don't have in front of you right now? That was sent by staff that's not been working on?
So I want to clarify, are you saying planning and zoning has not been passed?
Finalized as in terms of having a final document presented to council to make sure that the edits that I made per a motion, an amended motion were the correct edits that y'all wanted to have in the document. Because you should not pass a document with a motion that says, pass with edits. And then, not that I'm dishonest, but just to say that, or just to verify that I own it. Add it.
An explicit motion is what you're saying versus implied.
That wouldn't retroactively impact what happened with P and Z. You could state as a preference that if moving forward, if there was edits of substance, we wouldn't do that. But if it's just like typographical errors, we've always moved forward without having this.
Yeah, we, we changed record management officer to city secretary as a motion, as amended motion. Then we pass the ordinance as amended.
All that means is that the final document hasn't been forward, been brought forward for signature, is what that means.
Okay, so it hasn't been grossed yet.
Hasn't what?
Been grossed yet.
Fine, um, and embossed. Um, the other one that hasn't been finalized is, of course, INN until tonight. And then ordinance review.
So I'm going to go back to P and Z real quick. Um, the, it has passed.
Which one?
P and Z.
Planning and zoning, that means the P and Z never passed with this.
The, I'm gonna, I'm actually going to share information and I would love the city attorney to jump in. Um, he shared the process for, uh, an ordinance to pass. So council passed the planning or zoning ordinance. Um, the mayor has four days in which to send back to council. If he does not, it is automatically passed. Does city attorney, am I correct?
That's an accurate statement, yes.
Thank you. So planning and zoning happens, or the ordinance.
All I said is it hadn't been signed yet. Is that clear?
Yes, it is.
Hasn't been signed.
Thank you.
So I didn't want to put it in a packet without it being signed.
Okay.
Bring it.
Uh, I do, I do request that if you're going to provide individual council members with any kind of report and any status, that it be provided to everyone because that puts us at a disadvantage in, in regards to.
All it is, is verbiage, breaking down the ordinances is to eat into each section. It's nothing spectacular. It's just basic observation as to what's different in each section.
All right, that would have been. I, I mean, if you, I don't, we don't need to hold the meeting up for it, but anytime.
It's not complete. It was something that had just been started. And it literally takes the ordinance by each session so that staff can see where the differences are in case anybody was to ever ask. That's all it was.
So according to this, the hot committee, planning zoning and INN panel are not finalized.
Right, because they don't have a final signature.
But I thought we.
I know. Hot committee operated.
Yeah.
Hot committee was, hot committee operated, but when previous staff was writing up the ordinances, that one was never brought forth for final signature. That was something I discovered in research.
Okay, so hot and P and Z just require my signature?
Um.
Okay, we can do that.
So they're passed, they just need a signature.
That's what I've said several times already.
Just clarifying.
Um, cool. Well, this might be very helpful for legal. Um, I, go ahead. I'm sorry, I.
Well, I also had done my own schedules, um, not this thoroughly, but I put it on, on my own sheets. I compared what, I have one column, I call it the whereas. And how I compared the five boards of which whereas phrases they use. Uh, and this is kind of the way this goes. Um, in ordinance review, you just, the first whereas, and that's on the first three, ordinance review parks and tree board. Those and the second whereas on those three, those three, they're very consistent with the, with ordinance review parks and tree board. The one that is most inconsistent, and here's a column I call the body of the report. And the P and Z is the least consistent. I highlighted that in yellow. All to others, and I do have copies of this, but I need to, which we can hand out. Um. The others have a consistent number that we can reference. And I, I just think it's a really good idea to, let's say, what I call the body of the report. So first thing is popular name.
Did you make it up for all of us?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm just watching you look at your phone.
So popular name, if you go to the ordinance, I'm going to bark right column. Ordinance review calls it thirty point seven, parks and rec, thirty point nine, et cetera. Uh, you can go down all these and even the columns in the ordinance, where. Now, this is, um, ordinance review. This is the series of the body of what this committee does. What I like about this is that if we consist, we keep this consistent pattern, I can go to parks and rec, I can look up thirty point nine three and know that the terms and resignation criteria are going to be right there. So I can compare other boards. So this, this numeric, um, uh, ordering allows us to quite easily compare our five committees that are working, all these working committees. So except, um, planning zoning is one that's quite different. And it doesn't use numeric, the only one numeric that it used was thirty point three eight. And then it went into a series of letters. So I'm just suggesting that we keep this numeric ordering because it allows us to reference easier. Okay, go back to the first.
If, if I got to ask, so what, what you're saying basically that gets changed is, is the numbers, that the captions remain the same.
The captions are the same.
Renumber the captions so that they are all pretty much the same. Thirty point three nine is this particular one. And.
Yeah.
And that would.
Like purpose is thirty point seven one, creation thirty point seven two. That's true with, um, all, all the planning zoning. Now, on the whereas statements, um, these first three, they're very different, but, uh, the INN panel was reviewed by our attorney and it only has four whereas statements, so that might be.
I'm not a law book, okay? I, I, I wrote all those whereas. I, I used previous ordinances as pass. I literally copied the whereas out of old ordinances for these very same things and then verified that the citations were accurate and maybe adjusted some language to make them a little bit more like contemporary sounding and in regards to like, you know, how we talk about our community. But, uh, I mean, legal's been very clear that they do whereas's. And so I would leave that to that, to Charlie to sort of produce what's necessary there because my understanding of the whereas is they can be cited in a court case or used in reference in a court case. Otherwise, they're not as important to day-to-day business, especially because they don't, they don't get put into, um, the, the, the Bible code or that, that binder people reference. The whereas is just stay with the ordinance when passed. So just kind of some background information. I feel like it's a little bit helpful there that.
And the first, um, parks and rec, you know, the, the older ordinances, the first two whereas's were, we recognize that we have laws. And then we seek to be inclusive and then we want to value our citizens. I mean, these are kind of almost nicety statement. I don't see that they have a real legal relevance.
Yeah.
And those are not in there.
I think, you know, we're, we're, we're asking the city attorney to look at these as a, as a group um, and help us, you know, sort of bring them all into, into alignment. So these are obviously very good examples of where we're out of alignment and, and, you know, take a look at, you know, whether they look for ends at their inventory or whether they're missing from the other ones that need to be added. But, you know, like, like, uh, Mayor Proton Heinz said, I'm not an attorney either, so.
I think you're part of a culture more than, than anything else, which is still appropriate within the city doctrine.
Yeah.
And then just my middle column, there were, again, these are just things that I found. Um, I just called it other titles, things like citing the fact, severability, complication, effective date, and repealer. These are in half of the documents and the other half they're not. So if we need to have effective date, um, and that's what I hope the attorney can say. Okay, we need to say effective of this date or else it might say it was passed and the date is assumed.
I would say the problems we have even in this group of five or six or whatever that we have um, are also problems in various areas of our code. So the, these problems are not just from the last three years. Some of them date back a really long time, um, in regards to like the lack of human, uniformity throughout our code in all of these departments. And I will say that I will not proclaim proficiency to know when a repealer is absolutely necessary or when it isn't, and I could not begin to explain why it's in some places and not. In regards to these five, I will say it's likely either oversight or wasn't there previously if any version of this previously existed, so there wasn't that prompt to put it in an update. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah.
Um, so, I mean, I, I will just circle back to the INN panel and some of the key changes we made in that. Um, I think that that is right now our strongest example of legal review and input just because it's had the most. And, um, I just, I think if we move towards having all of them match it in form and substance as much as possible, that would be great. Obviously, P and Z will have some strong combinations. And so to me, the things we need to decide tonight are, does P and Z follow the council resolution in regards to Roberts rules? Or shall they make up their own Roberts rules, meeting procedures?
It's that they make their own rules.
No, right now, the current version says they follow council's resolution in regards to procedures of meetings. So it basically says, because we follow Roberts rules, P and Z will follow Roberts rules. We don't do that with anyone else. Maybe it makes sense to have P and Z more formal. I'm not saying we should change that. I just want, I want that to be clear to the attorney because that's a city preference and procedure that he will have as a question for us.
I think really what it is, is it has to follow basically whatever Toma does more so.
Toma, Toma does not set Roberts rules for how meetings proceed.
Okay, because I think Toma is, is, is our governing idea here.
I think what this is, it's a hangover. So P and Z used to set their meetings and, you know, or sorry, council used to set P and Z's meetings and buildings. Council had a lot of directives towards P and Z and I think that's just like a hangover kind of, like I didn't catch that part. So I agree that I would prefer the body, as, as long as the city attorneys are okay and says, yeah, that P and Z body can decide their own parliamentary procedures. I'd prefer to strike the council's control over that person.
Local government code two one one dot zero zero seven five, um, states that they specifically, that they have to follow, type of five fifty-one.
Right, so okay, five fifty-one is the, five fifty-one is the Texas Open Meetings Act. It has nothing to do with parliamentary procedure and how they run their meeting.
So that's, so we can't take that section off?
No, that's not what he just said. Toma, they are bound by Toma, just like council. We're not such a national yet. No, parliamentary procedure is not Toma. We're talking about parliamentary procedure right now. Should we tell P and Z they follow Roberts rules like we do? Or should we allow P and Z to have more meeting flexibility?
This just says that the commission will follow the parliamentary procedure adopted by the city council.
Right.
Your parliamentary procedure is loosely Roberts rules.
We, you know, we actually adopted Roberts.
Well, I know, but if you asked, I mean, if you, if you watch our meetings, we do not follow Roberts rules to the, to the letter.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, this, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
So the point is, none of our other advisory boards are bound by Roberts rules, nor are they bound by our adoption of Roberts rules. This is something specific to P and Z. It is one of the only major differences in how these boards operate right now. So it is one of the correct points that council should probably give legal some thing on, right? I think that they should follow Roberts rules because I believe the P and Z, unlike other advisory boards, has some very legal proceedings that they're responsible for. Roberts rules ensure that meetings are clean and neat or they, they attend. So I, I personally like the concept that they would follow and adopt, but that's my personal preference.
That's something also that, that the council, it's, it's fluid. We can, it can be changed over time. As far as we'd say, we're, we now put forth a resolution that they do this and this versus what they've been doing. But we can make it as, as elastic as we want it to be as far as that is concerned. And because of that, um, I think that the, the previous or what we already have in, in the wording is adequate as far as, and we will continue to tell them, if P and Z do it this way, because i- if you so choose, you can do it this way and it'll be fine.
So you want them to follow council as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with following council because, I mean, we, we get the job done. And, I mean, there are, there are certain parts of Roberts rules that we follow strictly. Um, but, you know, if you get into that book, it's, there's, there's lots of this, this, that. We need a full-time parliamentarian to, you know, help us out, you know, through it. Thank you, council member. You've done that job.
I just wanted to point out a couple more things and then I feel, I don't, unless people have.
Lennox got the floor.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Um, that was all that I had, except I do like the idea of coming up, coming up with almost a template so that not just us, but so that the citizens will be able to look at these ordinances and make a little sense of it.
Very much so.
Yeah.
Very much.
Um, so some other key changes that occurred in the INN panel between meetings as a result of our consultation with legal that council directed and asked for was that we designated first and second alternates. Because when it comes to promoting an alternate, it's unclear who should get promoted. Or in the event that there is, um, like what I mean promoted, I don't mean like, oh, now you're a full member. I mean, in the event that like both alternates show up to a meeting, but we only need one for voting, the first alternate will be the first one to be designated as a voter. That was unclear before. Um, and so that was a, that was a new change, um, regarding like procedure. Uh, and then we already pointed out the other one about how they'll, they'll nominate their own secretary to keep their minutes. That won't carry into P and Z because it can't. Um, and then Len, am I missing anything? I feel like those were the major changes where we kind of highlighted how city business operates and how it wasn't there in our ordinance before. Can you think of anything else?
Um, we clarified that, um, we had five voting members that if we had alternates that were attending, they were not voting members. They only became a voting member. So you never had a question of seven people on the board. It was, they were alternates. They became a voting member when they were needed.
So did we put, I'm sorry, I read this two days ago and I forgot it already. Um, did it, we put language to, to kind of represent that alternates do have a voice?
Yes, yes. So it talks about how they're encouraged to attend. So that was, again, was something that wasn't in our ordinance before. Then talk about what is the role of an alternate? What do they do and don't do? And then talking to our residents who serve in those positions, they've been unclear.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, on that front, we did clarify that a little bit.
Thank you. I think that, that at least from P and Z, what you do by talking with Andy, he's, the alternates weren't showing up because they didn't realize they had any participation. So I think it's good to reemphasize that, you know, alternates are important. Their voices can be heard in decisions. They just don't have to actually vote, but they could. It's a discussion.
Yeah.
And also pointing again to one of the things we talked about in retreat, the importance of that's doing better onboarding for our advisory boards.
Sounds like we have a nut bird, the attorney to chew on. He's going.
I am, my, I am a little, um, uh, yeah, it's a lot.
Do you feel like you have enough information out of this workshop to proceed or do you have any questions?
I have a ton. It's, I think it was, um, I'm going to have to get with the city secretary, um, and the city manager. I may have to get more with one of you to make sure that I'm moving in the right direction, but I, but I do have direction, yes. There may be some. There may be some minutia that, that I need clarification on, but, but other than that, I'm good.
So, just in a nutshell, did we decide that, like, P and Z has been recently redone, we're in pretty good shape with them, it's a, you know, we can't really use it as the template because it's so unique. But, but the impersecor mobility panel is new, it's clean. Um, if, if we use it as a basic template to update the others, we should be in good shape. Am I, am I right? Is that?
Yeah.
That everybody's taken on it?
And so whoever's maybe in controlling of these documents that are handed to us, also.
These guys?
May we get onto the, the attorney?
City attorney, just for his perusal.
We don't have a copy of the P and Z ordinance that was passed.
From the packet?
Yeah.
Well, well, to correct it. We don't even have a copy of that document. That was, that was out of the, that was out of the packet.
So the file that was put in the packet, you don't have?
We have, it's not corrected, it's.
Yeah, but there was two amendments, so.
One, I went back and lost. You spoke as the result, too, but you didn't actually make a motion to anybody about it, huh?
We don't have that, we don't have the document to correct it. I'll put it that way.
I'm confused.
Uh, using red line, I'll, I'll talk to you later about it. So it's, it's procedural in matter, it doesn't matter.
It's, it was in an email, as well as I put it in the packet, so.
Right, I can see.
It's procedural, we'll just.
Find that email, send it back out to, to be for, to be planned.
Yeah, great.
All right, so, any more work on the schedule? We actually had the workshop at five fifty eight PM, and we moved to, during our, number thirteen, uh, directing
the city attorney, and so we'll just keep one doing. Directing the city attorney to draft ordinance updates.
I move that we direct city attorney Zach to draft ordinance updates for all existing ordinances regarding advisory bodies to council in form and substance to mirror the INN panel in this packet as much as possible.
Second by Congressman Richardson, Mr. Chair. So the only part that it doesn't clearly say is the part about P and Z.
Because as much as possible, knowledge in P and Z.
So, so, so the attorney can hear that part as well, and maybe clear there.
All right, so, um, any discussion, further discussion? To move it that clear? The, Phil comments, in a minute, Cameron. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. I, I do have a question for the attorney, if possible. It wasn't about like that, but, uh, the Board of Adjustment, are they considered an advisory body to council? Will this umbrella then?
No, they're not an advisory body to council, they're a quasi judicial body. They're, um.
That would make, that ordinance is also bad, so.
All right, when my, and um, I'm looking at the, um, P and Z ordinance, the tree board, the PRB, the ordinance review committee, and the INN panel, and were there others incorporated in that?
There's the hot, but the hot committee doesn't meet very often, I can hear if you said that or not. So there's six, technically six actual advisory boards in this city.
Okay, I, I'll just, I'll have the city secretary send those to me, and then that way it'll get done properly.
Okay.
All right, so, um, what, and what do we want to see on the future, Jim?
Uh, I would like to discuss something possible action on distributing wildfire evacuation literature to residents as part of the Wood Creek Community Wildfire Evacuation.
Just a second.
It's a wildfire information after the resume.
I would like to discuss something action on adding another full-time member to the infrastructure and mobility.
My second, oh, did you?
No, I didn't, but I'll.
It's not pretty much.
Right, I'd like to have something that, that might look like a workshop regarding the June second Wood Creek Day, and I know that was yours before, but there's some things that I think will be very beneficial for the city, citizen.
I don't have any, I mean, I don't know when it's coming up, but just to let y'all know, we do have that, like, water task force that will potentially be rainwater stuff coming, um, forward from that, so there's like some pending business I'm wrapping up for, we're wrapping up for the city, and then, um, we're also working on, uh, procedural documents for the city. So I don't know when the submission for these items will happen, but just kind of like a, a heads up that this stuff is in process and we're all in the boulder at the helm.
Okay, we'll commit that on the next, next one, it's fine, otherwise we'll, you know, keep, keep working on. The others? Any analysis? Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Second.